Good evening and welcome to the November 15, 2018 Council Infrastructure Committee Meeting of the Issaquah City Council. I am Councilmember Victoria Hunt and I'll be chairing the meeting today. Councilmember Bill Ramos is excused and Councilmember Chris Ray will be substituting, so thank you. And we're also joined by Councilmember Stacy Goodman. On the agenda this evening, we have four items. We have AB 7687, Request for Right-of-Way Incumbrence, Talis Parcel 9. This is an action item. We have Updated Water System Plan, Amendments to IMC Chapter 13.90, Water Sewer and Storm Water Recovery Contracts, and also Project Updates. After each item, the council will ask questions and then we will also have public comments. So if you would like to have, if the public would like to comment after any of the items, there will be an opportunity to do that. And then for the action items after that, we will have deliberation and we'll make a recommendation that goes to the full council. So with that, let's get started and I will hand it over to Sheldon Lynn, Public Works Engineering Director.
Actually Keith Niven for his presentation of his agenda bill.
Sorry, I'm a little punchy. Good evening, Infrastructure Committee. I forgot which committee I was at this evening. Keith Niven, Director of Economic Development and Development Services. So I'm going to tee this one up and this one, this one may take a village. Brett Heath, Director of Public Works Operations is here. Doug Schlep, DSD Engineering, and Sheldon Lynn might also help me with this presentation. We'll see how it goes. Okay. So to get you oriented, the agenda bill in front of us is a request from a property owner to put wall tiebacks in city right-of-way and across-city property. The property that we're going to be talking about is Talis Parcel 9. Talis Parcel 9 is located immediately west of the intersection of Talis Drive and Shangri-La Way. And as Shangri-La bends up to Parcels 7 and 8, it takes on a different name and that's Foothills Drive. So you're going to have some reference to Foothills Drive later and that's really related to this portion of the roadway as it bends up to serve Parcels 7 and 8. Within that piece of roadway, we have water sewer and storm lines and this cut of the map basically shows that upper reach of the road. And I can go back to that bigger map if that would be helpful to get you oriented. But basically, we have water sewer and storm lines that are currently in the road and those serve those upper, that upper plat, 7 and 8. Parcel 9 is down here. And what you can see from this next graphic is the encumbrance that's being requested by the Parcel 9 property owner. So all of these lines that are coming back, the right-of-way is, it is shaded gray on my graphic. It looks kind of a little dingy up there, but it is actually the right-of-way. So this is one right-of-way edge, that's the other. The wall is here and the tiebacks are all these lines going through the right-of-way. So what they are is actually, and the non-engineers are going to talk and I probably shouldn't. So those tiebacks are actually the structural component of the wall that's being built within Parcel 9. So they hold the wall back and basically the earth on top of those tiebacks provides the resistance for those tiebacks that are being proposed within the right-of-way. The agenda bill in front of you, the recommendation by the administration is for denial. Our recommendation for denial is based on concerns over kind of two elements really, risk. These things become obstacles within the right-of-way, which then becomes something that could get damaged. And really, who's digging in the right-of-way? Well, the city is if we're replacing or repairing any of the wet utilities. Also, we have franchise utilities, so think waters, not waters, think gas, electric, cable that are also in the right-of-way. Those are typically shallow buried, but they are also within the right-of-way. And so you have a bunch of buried things within this area as well. And these tiebacks pose potential risk for the city if we were to hit them. You know, at some point, as I mentioned earlier, they do provide a structural element, the only structural element to this wall. And so compromising that structural element would be a potential, obviously, potential risk for the city.
Keith, the tiebacks, what are the tiebacks made of? What's the material?
So my understanding is, and I'm going to, so Gary's can deal, Doug, can you deal with that? So. You need to come to the microphone if you're going to speak.
Representative for the applicant?
So yeah, so the applicant's geotech engineer is here and I think we'll be able to probably better, more accurately respond to that question.
Thank you.
So Gary, it'd be helpful if you introduce yourself first.
I'm Gary Horvitz. I'm a geotechnical engineer with Hart Krauser and we are working for ORA Talis Resmark on the project currently designing the landslide mitigation project and constructing that. To answer the question, a tieback anchor is an element that is drilled into the ground. Think of it as a giant screw or a moly bolt where we're taking what is potentially an unstable soil mass and literally screwing it back in to underlying staple material. In this case, it's a zone of sandstone. And so that hole is drilled and then under pressure, after a reinforcing bar, a steel bar or steel strand is put in that hole, it's grouted up and then a jack is placed on the head of that tieback anchor and it is cinched up, basically post-tensioned, and then locked off. So you're taking the whole soil mass and just essentially tightening that whole soil mass and making it act as a block. And there are layers of that, and I think there are some figures that we provided that kind of show how it's laid out in relation to the right-of-way and things like that.
Thank you.
The other structural component is the actual soldier piles that go out in front. Those are steel. They're inserted in a similar manner and that's basically what the tiebacks bear on.
Thanks. So Keith, the wall, as I recall that parcel, the wall is on the uphill side of the parcel?
Yeah. So the wall's on the downhill. So the slope, it's sloping from the top of the sheet downward. So the wall is actually below, the top of the wall would be, and the majority of the wall structure, I don't know, I'm not sure what the top of the wall elevation is, but it's basically below the roadbed. So it's below.
Below the roadbed.
Because the whole parcel's going down towards SR 900.
It's at the top of a slope?
Yes.
So I don't need anything technical, just is it to stabilize soil behind?
So the design of the stabilization for Parcel 9 was a series of four wall systems. So this is the westernmost and the highest in elevation of those four wall systems. I think what we've been told is that they needed all four of those walls to stabilize the property for development. And so I would answer that this is one of those four components to stabilize the property for future development.
Does it have any effect of stabilizing the property above it?
I can't answer that. Gary might be able to address that later.
Thanks.
Excuse me.
Are you done with the presentation?
Yes.
All right. I just didn't want to ask questions if you had more stuff to cover.
Yes, I am through. You know, I think Sheldon, Doug, and Brett are here if we get into some technical city issues. I'm not that guy.
What's the alternative to doing a tieback wall? Is there an alternative?
Yes. I don't, there is an alternative. They could build a different type of wall that does not rely on tiebacks. Whether that's economically feasible for them, I don't know the answer to that. This was the wall they proposed. Is there another design and wall type? I don't know the answer because we haven't had that conversation yet. I think they are hoping that you will approve this, these, this encumbrance, which would allow them to move forward with this wall design.
So I noted that some of the tiebacks extend beyond the right-of-way?
So yes, we can talk about that. So these, these tiebacks here would extend into Parcel 8. Parcel 8 is owned by Talis Management Services. These walls in here would be extended onto city property. So what's being asked for from you tonight with this agenda bill, and that would need to be clarified in the agenda bill because I didn't understand that element until after the agenda bill was written, is not only are they requesting to encumber right-of-way, they're also asking to encumber city real property. And then these encumbrances over here, this is a tract that's owned by the HOA. And so they would have to approve those encumbrances.
And then last question. So what's the, we, we talked about, but what's the potential risk for the city or damage that could happen to the, to the tiebacks? Where does the, what's the downside?
So the tiebacks, as Mr. Horvitz described, so the tiebacks are a tensioned lateral. So think about a spring that's under tension and if you were to potentially untension that spring, it's going to snap back, right? And so, you know, the question is, what we don't know, because we haven't been provided that information, is, you know, if you were to damage a tieback or multiple tiebacks, at what point have you compromised the stability of the wall? And, you know, because we're talking about, you can see barely, I apologize for that, you can see some outlines of some structures here. So this is, this was based on the land plan that got approved. So you can see there are four plexes and six plexes kind of at this proximity to the wall. So, you know, one of the concerns that we would have is if you destabilize the wall and that caused a movement, you know, it would be potentially very close to future residences if ultimately we get to that space. So that's, I think, one of the biggest concerns.
There are a number of utilities that are listed in the packet. So there are wet utilities, water sewer and storm, and then also dry utilities, gas power and cable. Are those all currently in this right-of-way, all of those utilities?
Yeah, I apologize, I didn't get them all on one graphic. So the wet utilities are generally shown here. So you can see, unfortunately, all, these little, these little lines are not the tiebacks. They're just the callouts of the, of the tieback locations. So these are all, so, so from that previous slide, so think about all those tiebacks going through there. So they would go underneath, basically, all of these, and these are city utilities. The dry utilities, the sewer, the, sorry, it's, it's been a long week, the gas, electric and cable, those are typically in the outside five feet of the right-of-way. Are they on the east side, Doug, or the west side? The west side? East side? So they're, so Comcast and PSE are kind of, they run along this eastern five feet of the right-of-way right here. So that's where the dry utilities are.
Okay. And the, I think you just mentioned this, but I wanted to clarify, the little lines that are shown here, those are basically arrows indicating where a tieback starts on the wall.
Yeah.
So the wall itself, as designed currently, doesn't go into the right-of-way. It's, it's only the tiebacks.
Just the tiebacks.
I have one question about one of the questions and answers in the packet. There's one, "Does the previous site work plan approval set a reasonable expectation?" And then it says, "City staff are not granted the right to allow use of public lands except as given by city code." So I would read that as, as there being a no before the answer. And so I just wanted to clarify that that was the intent of that.
Sure. So when we discussed this with the property owner, there was a, as part of the land plan, there was a short wall located at the northern end and that wall had tiebacks in it. You know, they perceived that approval by staff, because there was a permit issued, as a, as acknowledgement that that's an okay outcome. You know, that permit was approved in 2014 and when I asked my staff why they allowed that, my staff didn't recollect that they had done that. It doesn't mean that, it doesn't mean that they, they didn't see it. It doesn't mean, it just means that they don't remember having granted an encumbrance of future right-of-way with that permit. So our position is staff has not granted the authority to encumber right-of-way. That existing permit that we issued, I would call that in error and I don't believe it sets precedent for the discussion we're having this evening.
Thank you. Is there any public, any member?
I have one more, sorry.
Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you. Could we, I would like to hear from Brett Heath, anything that he would like the committee to know, concerns about the proposed tieback locations? He has, if you don't have any comments, then, I would just like to know if you have any concerns about tiebacks being there, any work that your group might have to do.
Sure. Brett Heath, Public Works Operations Director. So I think what, the question before you tonight is really, you know, policy, do you want to allow this kind of encumbrance on the, on city right-of-way? It's really a permanent encumbrance and there's a number of questions that really need to be answered with regards to that. As far as the location of the, of the proposed encumbrance, from what I understand, appears to be below the existing utilities. But again, those are existing utilities. We don't know what we're looking at for future.
Thank you. Is there any member of the public that wishes to speak on this topic? And go to the microphone. And if you, if you would give your name in relation to the city, that would be great. And then you have three minutes if you'd like to use that.
Susan, your two exhibits are under the PDF right here?
You know what, I'm going to take one minute and I'm going to let Gary go. Because he's going to be able to answer questions. Thank you. Hi, good evening. I'm Susan Wilson and I'm here in my capacity as an executive officer of ORA Talis 90 LLC, the property owner of Talis 9. And my comments are going to be brief. I just want to give some important background information from the owner's perspective. And then I'm going to turn it over to Gary Horvitz. On June 2, 2014, the preliminary plat was approved for the 90-unit townhome project. You could see the outline of the units on the, the map that Keith had up there. A grading plan and a permanent retaining wall plan were approved for construction September 26, 2014. And it was in connection with that 90-unit project. And I have copies of those plans here if you'd like to see them. Those plans included permanent tiebacks under the right-of-way. So we do have an expectation that the city didn't have a problem with permanent tiebacks under the right-of-way in connection with this project being built then. So we didn't think they had any problem with them now and they haven't had any problem with all the tiebacks that we have planned all over in the four walls, three of which are under construction now to stabilize the site. There was really no other way to take the site to the grade shown on the approved plans for the project, other than to construct a permanent wall with permanent tiebacks. And to be clear, I think our plans today, although there's more tiebacks because we're trying to stabilize the slide situation, our plans are consistent with, with what has always been planned for Talis 9. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Gary because he can, he has some good slides to show you about where the tiebacks would be in relation to the existing utilities. Thank you. Thank you. He's saying that your, your PDFs are right there. Get out of your way.
Thank you again. Gary Horvitz with Hart Krauser, geotechnical engineer of record for landslide mitigation. Okay. Actually, I bought a pointer. So to, just to expand.
You need to use the mouse to point.
Oh, do I?
Otherwise, they can't see it at home.
Oh, they can't see it at home? Ah, okay, got it. All right. So just to clarify some things, the top of these green lines are the top of the wall, but you can see a red line down here that changes in elevation. And that's basically where the planned cut is out in front of that wall. There's as much as a 25-foot-high cut that needs to be made to achieve the grades associated with building the 90 townhomes. And right, that basically, essentially wind up with some of these tieback anchors extending back across the right-of-way into the city real property. I think this basically shows in detail, in greater detail, and perhaps you can get a better understanding of what's involved. This vertical line is the soldier pile. Those soldier piles are installed by drilling and placing a steel member in those holes, acts as a giant washer. And then these tieback anchors are installed. And the intent of the tieback, this line, which is kind of difficult to see, is the top of the stable sandstone layer. So we have to basically drill back in to the sandstone and create an anchor zone back in that sandstone. These multiple rows of tieback anchors work together to basically cinch this whole potentially unstable layer together. And one of the things we've looked at is, you know, what is the potential for conflicts with the city's utilities? At the shallowest, at the edge of the right-of-way, we're 10 to 11 feet below grade. And at the backside of the right-of-way, on the west side of Upper Shangri-La, we're as much as 30 feet below. So I think the likelihood that we would be interfering with any of the existing utilities or likely potential utilities that might be in the right-of-way is fairly low. To the extent that we would have to, to avoid any utilities and make the system even deeper below the surface of the right-of-way, those tieback anchors can be steepened. They're shown here at a 15-degree down angle because that is the optimal design for them. You need to be able to install them downward so that grout will flow into the hole, but you want to keep them as shallow as you possibly can to make them as efficient as possible. So this basically, a cross-section is what this, what this looks like. And I think the most important point to make here is that the upper Tier 4 wall, which is here, again, this is just schematically showing soldier pile and tieback anchor, all four of these walls work together. This kind of, well, it's gray there, but purple here is basically the stable sandstone and the lighter colored layer above it is a residual soil, very weak soil, which is basically the cause of the landsliding that has occurred out there and is fairly common. So in order to get an adequate factor of safety, which is a numerical way of saying to make the site adequately stable, and there are standards of practice for what that numerical value is, we need to have all four of these walls working in concert with one another. So it's not like we can eliminate Tier 4 and get what we want out of the other three tiers. You know, on an interim basis, their factor of safety is adequate, but over the long-term permanent case, we need to have something up here at the location of Tier 4 as well. And the thing to, I think, point out here, it's, this is not just a matter of convenience for ORA Talis. I mean, they want to be able to put these 90 townhomes up here, but by stabilizing this entire area, we're also helping to stabilize the right-of-way and the property above it. This Tier 4 acts as somewhat of a buttress for everything that's going on uphill of it and enhances the stability of the right-of-way and the property on the uphill side of the right-of-way. So there's a benefit to the developer, obviously, and there's a significant benefit to the city as well.
Thank you.
That's about all I really need to say.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this topic? Any thoughts? Councilmember Ray?
I have another question, Mr. Director Niven.
Lot of choices tonight. I was just going to wait till you let me know.
And actually, we could have done a buzz-in, y'all could have had a shot at it. What's the urgency? I mean, what's the timeline for making a decision here?
So, you know, obviously, I think the community has expressed an interest in, in getting this piece of property into a condition other than it's been for the past, let's see, two, three years. And so, you know, so there's a little bit of urgency there in terms of community expectation that it, it moves from a mountain of plastic to something else. I think the property owner would tell you that they've made a significant investment in this piece of property and any delay would be damaging for them. And so I think those are the two factors to consider when we're talking about timing. Because we're already in the wet season. You know, it would be, if we were, if it was August, I'd say, yeah, we could probably talk about this a little bit before the rains came, but the rains are here. So we've missed the weather piece. So it's, I think it's about financial impact to the property owner and aesthetic impact to the community.
So the administration's recommendation was not approved?
Correct.
What were the factors that kind of drove you there?
So the factors are, you know, I think that we've, we believe we've been consistent in our dealing with applicants in not allowing for permanent encumbrances of right-of-way. I think clearly, the property owner has demonstrated that we missed one. I think that, you know, it's, it's, it's accepting risk. I think you heard Mr. Horvitz say, "Low risk," or "Not much risk," but there's risk. And so, you know, the city is fairly risk averse and I think the question is, is, you know, is there enough public benefit for us to, you know, if, if the council were to ultimately say, "Yes, we'll approve the encumbrances," you know, there would be a cost to the property owner. It's not free, but that's not a lot of money. It's, it gets appraised and whatever true value there is, we get reimbursed for that true value. value. But as Director Heath said, you know, we know what's out there now. They're planning to miss it vertically, but there's, you know, we own that property and that right-of-way forever, and we will have potentially 60 new homeowners up the hill from there in this, fairly soon, I believe, since the final plat for seven and eight got approved and is done. So I think that the big issue is, is risk, and the city tends to be fairly risk averse most of the time.
All right, one more. So when the original plan was submitted in June of 2014, that was before the final plat was approved?
It would have been before the final plat. So, so the permit, the grading permit and walls under, were under the preliminary plat. So we issue, so what happens is parcel nine was part of seven and eight, so seven, eight, and nine, all preliminary platted together. And then, once the preliminary plat is approved, the property owner can then move forward with building infrastructure and doing plat improvements to get to where they could then final plat it, which then allows them to sell lots.
Was that portion of Shangri-La Way that was in the grading plan part city right-of-way at that time?
No.
My question was, was the part of Shangri-La Way that was part of the grading plan that had the tiebacks under it, city property and city right-of-way at that time? And that was a no?
That was a no.
I had a question about the liability. It seems from reading this that the liability and the risk associated is, is more that if the city is constructing something, or the city's actions are damaging in some way, the tiebacks, not that, not that in the construction process of the tiebacks, they might damage the utilities. Is that right?
You're right. It does read that way, but the way you said it, I would agree. There is, I mean, there could be risk to the existing public infrastructure by allowing them to bore underneath it. Sure, there's some risk, probably not much, but there's some, absolutely.
Sorry, I'm going to interject here a little bit. There's an additional risk associated with it. While the tiebacks are below the existing utilities, as Brett Heath has mentioned, Keith has mentioned, Gary's mentioned, if there was an event that caused our water utility to leak in that area, you could have a major blowout, which would then destabilize, potentially destabilize those tiebacks, and you could end up with destabilizing the wall at the same time. So there's a risk there, depending upon the tiebacks, when you have a utility up above that could also possibly have an issue in the future. Unlikely event, but it's a risk. So I just want to make sure that people are aware of that as well. We have had water main leaks. Contractor hits a water main, you could have some pretty major washouts and things like that, that would, could potentially destabilize the tiebacks and the wall.
One other question. In our, in our packet, under pros, there is none, so I'm wondering if it's, if the city's not think that the stabilization of the upslope is a factor that would be a pro for having these tiebacks, as mentioned in.
So, so by upslope, are we talking about this area that's west of the right-of-way? Or are you thinking about the right-of-way?
I think both.
Okay. So, the right-of-way, so one of the conditions before we moved, so if you remember, the final plat for seven and eight was appealed by parcel nine over geologic concerns that that upper slope was or could impact their property. And so that got remanded back by Superior Corps to the city for additional geotech consideration. Okay? And so we did that work. TMS built another wall, a buried soldier pile wall east of Foothills Drive. And between their geotech, which was Pangio, and our geotech, Skolder Engineering and Shannon and Wilson, the belief was that Foothills Drive with that additional wall was stable and that we could move that final plat forward for approval, and that has been approved by the hearing examiner and has not been appealed. So our, our opinion, based on our geotech's consideration of all this, is the uphill slope is, is stable as is.
Thank you for that explanation. Councilmember Ray?
I think you already answered this, but I just want to confirm I got it right. As a matter of, of practice and policy and precedent, we don't generally give permanent easements under right-of-way?
We do not. We, we allowed Grand Ridge Plaza to put tiebacks in to build the parking garage that's east of the Regal Cinema in the Highlands, but as soon as they built that structure, it detensioned those tiebacks, and they're basically, they are in right-of-way, but they serve no purpose. We were also asked by Vail, which is its seventh and locust, to put GeoPiers in the right-of-way to support their multifamily building, and we told them that we would not allow that, and they moved them outside of the right-of-way in their, in a redesign. So we think we've been consistent. I mentioned the one maybe miss that we had with this property, but I think we've been consistent with other applicants about no encumbrances in the right-of-way.
Any thoughts on this item? Councilmember Ray?
I, I think we, we have a longstanding precedent of not doing this. I don't see, I've not heard a compelling reason to do this, so it's difficult for me to, behind making a change in direction without really understanding or seeing a public good, and at the same time, it may be a remote risk, but taking on additional risks, so not particularly supportive.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman?
Yeah, I would agree with Councilmember Ray. I, and it's, it's not an insignificant project. And I, and I see, I suppose we could characterize it as maybe very low risk, but in the event that something does happen, it would, it could potentially be a significant event, and I'm just, I just do not see a reason that the council should approve, that I can, that I would recommend proving something in particular this size, permanent, especially with the history of that property, that is just too concerning to me.
Thank you. I would agree with my fellow councilmembers. I think that the, this area, there's going to be a number of more homes, there's going to be a number more utilities and construction going on and changes to the landscape, and I think that accepting, accepting risk in the form of having these structures under the right-of-way, I don't see that that is in the best interest of the city. So I, I would tend to agree that I am not supportive. So, is there any further comments? All those in favor of, of recommending to the full committee the administration's recommendation that council deny the encumbrance of Foothills Drive Northwest requested by ORA Talus 90? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So that passes three to zero, and I think the next question is, consent or regular business?
I think it's regular business. I think there's, there's others who would probably would like to hear the discussion we just had.
Okay. Member Goodman noting.
Sure, I would go along with what you two decide. At some point, I think it's going to, we probably, this is a separate item, need to have a definition of what goes on in consent, what goes on regular, since our business meetings are supposed to be a lot about doing our business at the, most of our deliberations are at committee level and business meetings are at council meetings, but if we want to put it on regular business, I'm fine with that.
Okay, we'll put it on regular business.
So December 3rd, regular business?
The next item on the agenda is AB 7538, updated water system plan. This is a discussion item, and it will be presented by Robert York, engineering manager.
Good evening, councilmembers. I'm Bob York, Utilities Engineering Manager and Public Works Engineering. We're here at CIC tonight after being absent several months to give you an update of the progress, progress we made on the water system plan. Since the last CIC meeting, which I think was this late spring, we've been to three council work sessions where we've presented various policy issues for your consideration. We've took, we've obtained your feedback and feel like we're getting closer to addressing your concerns and getting to the finalization of the water system plan. Tonight in your agenda packet, there are several documents that you can refer to. Number one is the agenda bill itself, 7538, that referred the water system plan draft to the CIC committee. We've also included a memo that, that summarizes the feedback we've received from the last council workshop on September 10th. Included in that packet also is a proposed timeline that we, shows the schedule of different and sequence of activities that leads to the finalization and adoption of the water Also shown in the packet is a supply options evaluation, the so-called pro forma, that gives you much more detail on the possible options, the three options that we see are integrated options that you, for your consideration on the, for the water system plan as it rolls out over the next 20 years. Finally, we have a brief presentation that we prepared to give you, that gives you a, an update of all these matters. Familiar faces here, Jeff Hanson, who's been presenting this, doing these presentations all along. He's with HCR Engineering, and he's been involved in the detailed analysis of many of these options. Another thing I'd like to mention is that the council requested that we provide additional public outreach opportunities for the public to hear and weigh in on the progress of the water system plan. Tonight is one such opportunity. Our communications group used various social media and other avenues to inform our citizens of this opportunity. So what happens after tonight, we're continuing to make progress in addressing agency comments. We're going to get your feedback, and the next opportunity for council input is, or December 10th, council work session, where we hope to get to the point where we address all the concerns and policy issues that you've had and get to a point where in early 2019 we can present an agenda bill to allow you to adopt the water system plan. So without further delay, I'm going to, so I don't repeat it myself and have Jeff say the same thing, I'm going to have him do the presentation, and Jeff and I will be available for comments and feedback.
All right, let's see, is this in play mode, or how do I? Well, I didn't, I think this is the, just want to make sure we're in PowerPoint mode, but if you all can follow along, I think we'll, we'll roll with it like it is. You can see, you can understand it? Okay. So a quick outline of tonight's discussion, since it has been a couple of months since last we've talked, we'll do a quick recap of the key policy issues that we've brought before you over the past few months, focusing in on the key one that we've talked the most about, which are the supply options, the water supply options. There was one piece of homework that was requested of us from the last council work session, was to revisit the cost-risk analysis of those supply options, so we'll walk through that updated analysis. That's really the one point of new material that we're bringing in front of you this evening. Then we'll do a recap of the summary of what we're calling the recommended integrated option that addresses all of these policy issues, conservation, supply, and treatment. And then, you know, Bob just hit the highlights of where we are going from here in terms of completing the water system plan update. I'll go through a little bit more detail on that, and then we'll open it up to questions. So first of all, policy issues, there, you may recall, there were really three categories of these, conservation, supply options, and water quality and treatment. On conservation, the highlights here, you will recall that you historically have adopted as the formal conservation goal Cascade's regional conservation goal, and the recommendation is to continue in, in that way. We also discussed the development of informal targets, which would be utilized to allow the city to track your progress in achieving conservation. I'm not going to revisit all that detail, but just hitting that that's what we have talked about. In terms of supply options, you will recall that that discussion began in the spring about the identified future deficiency in providing water supply to the areas of the city that currently receive groundwater supply only, and we've discussed various options to address that deficiency, really considering introduction of regional water into that area and blending it with the groundwater supply, or converting solely over to regional supply. And I'll go through those options in more detail in a moment. And finally, on water quality and treatment, late in the summer, we talked about the fact that there are treatment upgrades needed at your well supplies to optimize current operations and prepare for future changes in regulations, as well as to support this potential concept of blending regional and groundwater in the valley zone. And then we looked at options about constructing one new centralized facility versus upgrading your two existing facilities. So that, that's been the past discussion. Any questions on that before I dive into more detail on supply options? This is ground we've covered before. When it comes to supply options, you may recall, we've talked recently about three options. Option one is that blending option, bringing regional supply in and blending it with groundwater, and this allows you to continue to use your groundwater sources and just your blending in the regional supply. Option two is the other end of the spectrum, and that is ceasing the use of your groundwater supplies altogether and converting the entire city service area to regional supply. Remember that there's really kind of two pathways there. One, to retain your wells, for example, for emergency purposes, you have to pay Cascade regional capital facilities charges, or you could transfer your wells to Cascade. Option three was an option where we considered, can we make modifications to the Option three was an option where we considered, can we make modifications to the distribution system in the area that's presently served only by groundwater, so as to shrink that area and keep it groundwater only for a longer period of time? We talked about geographically where that could be back in September. We also talked about the fact that this would require some significant infrastructure improvements, piping, valving, new storage to maintain fire suppression capabilities in those areas. And it's important to note, the last bullet here, that option three, the end result of that is that it delays, but it does not avoid the ultimate need to implement option one, to bring regional water into the area served by groundwater. Yes?
I have a clarification on that. I, I don't think I understand why there couldn't be a small area that's always served by the ground, or you know, for the foreseeable future, served by groundwater.
So when we went about the task of trying to identify an area that could be reasonably segregated and maintained as groundwater only, the area that, that was defined was large enough and is projected to see enough growth that groundwater alone would not support that. To shrink that area even further, so as to stay groundwater only, becomes more and more challenging in terms of reconfiguring, reconfiguring the piping network to support that. I mean, that's the, without showing maps and such, that's the, that's the quick answer. Could you get to that point? You could, but the costs will continue to go up and up. So when thinking of these options, we considered a cost risk analysis. We looked at, first of all, just in terms of the financials and the costs, we conducted a 20-year present value analysis. We presented this last time in September. There was a request from council to prepare the detailed pro forma, like Bob mentioned, that's in your packet. We also took the opportunity to revisit some assumptions, take a little bit more time on option three and understanding what infrastructure improvements would be required. And so the results are summarized here and we can go to the detailed pro forma if we need to, but the bottom line results here are, option one has a 20-year present value cost. Now again, present value cost, this is incorporating capital costs as well as ongoing operational costs. So 20-year present value of just under $40 million for option one. Option two, which is converting completely to regional supply, under either option, option A, 2A is where you retain your wells, but you have to pay the RCFCs to Cascade, so it's a higher cost, $76 million. Option 2B is to transfer the wells to Cascade, so you lose that local source. That's around $60 million. Option three, the reduced groundwater only area, ends up with a 20-year present value of 43 to 44 million, as shown here. So what, what essentially is happening in option three is it is deferring or delaying the implementation of option one, which means the construction of the centralized treatment facility by three to six years, but to effect that change, there are other infrastructure improvements needed to make that happen. And that's the piping, the valving, new storage, et cetera. So it's those upfront capital costs that outweigh the benefit of deferring the capital cost of option one. Lot of details there at the bottom that I won't really go into unless you, you have questions. You know, a couple of things that we fine tuned, just so you know, we tuned up the costs of the RCFCs to be reflective of $2,018 in this analysis. That, that effect was minimal. In this analysis of present value, we are not inflating future costs and we're using a discount factor of 4%. One exception to that is we, we wanted to recognize the fact that land values are increasing more quickly, those values are inflating more quickly than other more CPI related type of inflation. So we incorporated inflation for land purchase, which is associated with the, the future treatment facility. So it's a fine point, but I wanted to mention that because that is a change.
Is that part of why the, why option three is also more expensive? Because you're deferring, what I would think, you're deferring decisions like purchasing lands and the land will be more expensive and construction may or may not be more expensive?
That really wasn't, that effect was minimal on option three because it's only moving, it's only deferring by three years. The larger effect was when we sat down with engineering and operations staff and thought through the requirements for making that geographic split in option three, just the construction costs alone increased and that was a bigger effect on that cost difference.
So I think this is great, but did you factor in the cost of water since our, traditionally our well water costs less than buying from Cascade?
We did. So that's incorporated in the annual operations and maintenance costs and the pro forma details that out, costs of operationally of pumped well water versus what is referred to as the demand, the demand share cost on Cascade water. So yeah, that's factored in. Any other questions on that? Okay. So the bottom line message here is that option one falls out as having the lowest 20-year present value cost. So that being said, the summary of, again, what we're referring to as the recommended integrated solution. So first, again, a restatement of the issue or the need, and that is that regional supply is projected to be needed sometime between 2021 and 2027 in the areas of the city that currently rely only on groundwater. So the recommended solution to address that has multiple components. First, if you maintain your current conservation program, you will continue to see some gains in that arena and that can defer this need to bring in regional supply, but it's only by about a year. Secondly, the Talis area, you will recall, has seen regional water in the past, but was converted back to groundwater supply. If that Talis area is converted back to regional supply, defers the need to bring regional supply into other areas that see groundwater by about five years. And then the recommendation is to construct the centralized treatment facility to support multiple objectives, but including blending of regional and groundwater to meet the long-term needs. So that's what we call the integrated solution. Questions?
The 2021 number, so that's the, that's the soonest of the estimated time when this will occur. Does that factor in the current conservation trend, conservation of water trend?
So the 2021 does not. It's, it's after the 2021 that factors in the conservation. Remember, we, we saw charts previously where we looked at ranges of forecast and we have the, what we call the conservatively high forecast, which does not include effects of conservation. That, that's what's behind the 2021.
Okay, so, so then it, it, the estimate would be approximately how many? It's, it's just one year difference though, if we factor in conservation.
Right.
So it would start, it would be shifted 2022 to 2028.
That's correct. Yep.
Okay.
So that's, you know, that's kind of the bottom line. That's, that's kind of the take home message with respect to these three core policy issues that we've been discussing, discussing with you over the, the past few months. And now I just wanted to transition more broadly to status of the water system plan as a whole. Bob already hit on this briefly. Late summer, we received-
Can I just rewind you for just a second?
Yeah.
A little slow today.
That's all right.
So can you slide, slide back a little bit? So if, if we were to go with the treatment option, when do we start working on that? I mean, just, just back, kind of doing a T minus backing up.
So soon. And you'll see this in the schedule. Yeah. So you'll see this in the schedule coming up. We've, we've got that next year because there is a sequence of events, obviously, in terms of planning, pre-design and design, and there's land acquisition. And so all of those things need to get moving very soon to achieve a timeframe here in the 2020s.
Thanks.
Yep. No, no questions? Okay. All right. So external water system plan review, late summer, we received comments from the state department of health, from King County, from Sammamish Plateau, and over the past couple of months, city staff and HDR have been compiling responses to those comments. That, that work is completed and now the next step in that process, just for your information, is we submit a response to comments document to the department of health and we seek their, what we oftentimes refer to as an informal approval of those responses. They are not approving the water system plan, but they're acknowledging that our responses and the way that we've edited the document resolves those comments. So that's the next step in that process. And so over the next couple of weeks, we'll be working with state DOH on that piece. Any questions on that? That's just kind of a housekeeping item. Okay? Overall timeline and next steps, this is a timeline that we showed last time. I'm not going to go through it in, in great detail, I just want to hit some key things. I'm not going to go through all the background prior to where we are right now, which is here. As Bob mentioned, part of the purpose of tonight and then the December 10th council work session is to provide opportunity for public input. Also occurring in December will be the formal SEPA review that's associated with the water system plan. So that'll be occurring in December and assuming that we achieve the thumbs up from the state department of health, we'll be finalizing the plan. All of that then is leading us to the plan to come back in front of full council in January, seeking adoption of the final water system plan. Once council adopts the plan, then state department of health will formally approve the plan. So first quarter next year is when those activities would happen. Now that, those are the activities associated directly with the water system plan. After that then would be implementation of some of these things that are in the plan, such as planning and pre-design for the centralized treatment facility. And those are some of the next steps that you'll see down here. You will recall that one of the items that will be a part of that discussion are questions and discussion around fluoride. Remember, this is something that did not need a policy decision right now in the context of the water system plan, but in 2019 and then into 2020, that would be the timeframe for that discussion.
When you say King County approves, which, King County Council, King County Health? Who?
King County Council. Yeah.
Just curious.
It goes through the UTRC and then it's essentially approved by council. Yep.
One, one part of clarification, in January, the agenda bill for the water system plan actually resides here in committee. So in January, the committee will have to recommend that the agenda bill be brought out of committee with a recommendation to council for adoption. So just a little slight variance there, but from a process perspective, the committee still has to take action on the agenda bill to take it out of committee.
Thanks. Yep. So that is the overall timeline and that, that really brings me to conclusion. This was really just a brief update and we wanted to brief committee on the changes to the supply options analysis. So any other questions or discussion?
I have one. On the Talis, if, if we were to go forward with converting Talis to the regional water, would that timing be any time between when we make the decision in 1921, or sorry, 2021? Or could it be later in the process or?
We'd have to see how the demands are occurring, but the longer that we can keep using and maximizing our groundwater, the lower our costs are for purchase of regional water. So, you know, we would hold as long as we can before we convert Talis back to regional.
Okay.
That, that's what I was going to say too. It's more of a real-time decision, doesn't require a lot of pre-planning to implement that, that change. As compared to the decision to move forward with the treatment facility, there's a whole sequence of steps there that takes time.
And that's because the infrastructure is there because it was previously on regional water, so it would be a-
That's correct. The, the infrastructure is in place to move regional water or groundwater up into Talis.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? And some of Ray.
So fascinating stuff. I'm, I'm so happy I'm here tonight for this. So the implementation phase has got, you know, I, it's pretty clear where we're going with the water system plan, but I'm, I'm kind of looking at the horizon. So we're going to do the planning and the pre-design and then the rate study, is that rate study going to take into account how we're going to pay for the treatment plan? Or how do we make sure that we have adequate fund reserves so that we can pay for this whole thing?
The rate study that's scheduled for 2019 in the preliminary budget would incorporate the, the funds necessary to get all the way through the construction of the treatment plant.
Great, thank you.
Are there any members of the public that would wish to speak on this item? All right, are there any other comments, thoughts?
Okay, thank you.
My thought is 2021 is coming right up.
Yeah, that's right.
Next on our agenda is AB 7649, amendments to IMC, chapter 13.90, water sewer and storm water recovery contracts. And this is a item for action this evening.
Thank you. I finally get to talk. So this agenda bill was one that was in committee last month. There were some comments about it to modify the ordinance and code revisions and when staff went back, we looked deeper into the RCW as well as our code and we found some other areas that we felt we really needed to improve upon and clarify. So what we did was we put the agenda bill back into council and referred it back to committee and staff worked with the city attorney and we completely rewrote the ordinance and we also prepared a, I'll call it a boilerplate, latecomer agreement. So tonight, what I'm going to do is I'm going to talk a little bit about the RCW and then I'm going to talk about what the recommended changes are in the code as incorporated in your packet.
You did a good job, Sheldon, I'll just let you know. There's a lull here.
What?
I thought you did a good job.
Oh, thank you. Okay, now where am I? So a little bit of background, the RCW was changed in 2013 and was effective in 2014 by the legislative action. Staff was recently informed this year by city attorney that the changes had occurred and the primary impetus behind these changes was the fact that the duration of the latecomer agreement had to be a minimum of 20 years and we had in our code 15 years. That was what we had originally come forward to the committee for. IMC 1390 is the municipal code section that is being changed and I've already spoken what happened at the previous committee. So in the current draft ordinance that's in front of you in the packet that was in the agenda bill that was referred back, the draft ordinance modifies IMC 1390 to create a minimum term of contract, 20 years. It also adopts a latecomer agreement standard format for use by staff. It also provides for a public hearing process. I'm going to stop here and elaborate a little further on that process. The process for the public hearing was an idea that staff worked with the city attorney on in that the action that staff, that the council takes with the agreement creates an assessment against the properties that gets recorded against properties. And so we felt it would be a good idea to have a public hearing that the property owners that are affected could come and talk to the council if they so chose to. They could say the assessment's too much, it's too little, you know, or, or what, or they don't even benefit from the facility. So it's, it's analogous kind of to a local and- So it's analogous kind of to a local improvement district hearing, but it's an opportunity for somebody that's going to get an assessment to come and talk to the legislative body that's getting ready to create that assessment.
Councilmember Goodman?
So you say it's an opportunity for those who are going to get an assessment. It's only if they choose, is that right?
That's correct.
It's only if they choose to hook up.
That's correct.
So it's, one property owner decides to make an improvement and says, you know what? If anybody else hooks into what I paid for in advance, then they have to pay fees to help reimburse me for what I've invested.
That is correct.
So the hearing is, would be for, not necessarily, there wouldn't necessarily be anybody currently at the hearing except the one who wants the latecomer agreement. There might not be anybody else, right? So we don't have anybody who's required to hook up?
Right. But when you, but we would notify those parcel, the parcel owners or the property owners that are identified as would have to pay something when they hook up--
Sure.
--about it, because they could come and they could say, well, the way you did the methodology, we don't like that. We think it should be this way. So it's an opportunity--
No, I totally, I totally get that.
But yes, you're right.
I just wanted to clarify. It's a voluntary hookup later.
That's correct.
Okay.
It's a voluntary hookup later. And if they were to hook up after 20 years, then there'd be no assessment. Fees. We realize that it takes time and effort to process these agreements through council, especially when you have public hearings and things of that sort. It also takes an effort by the engineering department and permit reviewers to review the methodologies, calculations, and things like that to ensure that the assessments are fair and equitable amongst the benefiting district area. And so, the staff worked with the city attorney and came up with a number of $3,000 for an application fee for the latecomer agreement. There's an administrative fee in the code that, so when those people voluntarily hook up, the RCW requires that we collect a fee. And the way we collect it is, is we actually reduce the amount of funds that we pass through to the originator of the agreement. And that way, the person hooking up isn't paying extra. They're still just paying what the assessment is, but we take the $300 out of the assessment before we pass it on to the owner of the latecomer agreement. Yes?
The latecomer fee for all those later--
Yes.
--connection folks, does that include all of the fees?
No.
So the, so the one who is making the application is the one who's bearing all the fees?
Oh, just a minute. No, the latecomer fee, that you're talking about, the assessment?
Sorry, I'm talking, yeah. So, for example, is the application fee and the administration fee, all the other fees that you have to pay, all the other costs that are in the ordinance here, are those added?
Yes, those are all part of the costs that go towards building the facility. All permitting and administrative fees and things like that, that the owner pays in order to get to the point of building and then building the facility. It incorporated in and calculated in within the benefit assessment.
So do latecomers pay their pro-rata share of those costs?
Yes.
Not just construction, but fees?
Yes. Engineering fees, everything, they pay their pro-rata share.
Okay.
Without interest.
Is there a benefit when somebody comes to the city and wants to build a facility? And is it getting folks off of septic? Is it improving some sort of lines? Is it--
Sometimes it could be getting people off of septic. Other times, it's a developer that's extending water main along the frontages of property that's undeveloped, just so they can get to their property, things like that. There was a developer extension where they were looking at a latecomer agreement, and they were actually running sewer past some homes and so forth, just to get to theirs. But at the end of the day, all the homeowners got together and they paid it all at once. So we never had to enact a latecomer agreement.
What I'm getting at is $3,000. You know, we tend to think of developers in deep pockets. That's not always the case. $3,000 seems like a lot of money. That concerns me a little bit. And even if you have developer who's already paid application fees and they're building, maybe they're extending something. I mean, we sit here and look at $3,000, and we think, okay, well, people always have $3,000. $3,000 is a lot of money.
That's approximately the cost, though, that it would take the city to actually process the application. When you look at the amount of time it takes to bring it in, evaluate the benefit district, the time it takes to write agenda bills, prepare the public hearings, it's not just one staff person. There's a lot of people and time that's put into this. Then, there's the confirmation of the methodology, because it could change depending upon the geographic area. There's a number of things that could change. So it's not a rubber stamp issue. I actually thought long and hard about it and actually penciled out, well, if I did this, it's about this many hours, this many hours, this many hours. And it ended up being, right, about $3,000. So that's what, that's why we said $3,000 for the application fee for just the latecomer Administrator fee is basically the fee, you know, that takes us to process these latecomer payments and then process them through and pay off the owner. And then, previously, it was requested to incorporate some references to the other types of fees that were paid or would have to be paid by the developer or owner. And so, those are also referenced in the code. Standard latecomer agreement that's attached and would be adopted by reference includes all the elements required under the RCW. There is one element that is a policy element that I want to bring to your attention that is not included. It's a section in the RCW that says that the latecomer agreement may include a provision for extensions to the latecomer, to extend it past a 20-year time period. My cheat sheet note. And the RCW provides for the extensions of the 20-year reimbursement period for time periods that do not exceed the duration of any moratorium, phasing ordinance, concurrency designation, or other government action that prevents making applications for or approvals of any new development within the benefit area for a period of six months or more. What comes along with that is, if the council wanted to do that and incorporate that as an opportunity to extend, it creates an administrative cost and tracking issue for the city that's not reimbursable. We would have to track the property owners over time. And then, every time that action would be taken, the extensions, we would have to provide notification to each of the property owners that are on the assessment list. And then, we would also have to absorb the cost of recording the document again against all those properties. So it's another, you know, bit of work for not a lot of benefit at the end of the day. So the administration's recommending not include that. So the ordinance and the latecomer agreement is written without that provision within it.
But it's still an option. If a person or developer who wanted a latecomer agreement and they read the RCW, then, and they ask the city for a latecomer agreement with extension, then it could still be included.
That's correct. It's not in the boilerplate latecomer agreement. They could ask the city. And so, as part of the public hearing process, they could come and say, we want this to be added into it. And then, it's a council decision. It's not part of the boilerplate recommendation. You're correct. So the recommendation is to adopt the code as revised in the latest version, which incorporates also a boilerplate agreement.
I just have one question on this one. And there were specific wording regarding the cost recovery and I think the extension of the time period. And it looks like the city attorney has reviewed this and the new wording. So has this gone through the legal review? And were those changes from our last meeting all incorporated?
Changes from last meeting were all incorporated, and the city attorney actually drafted all the documents. Staff reviewed them and had conversations before he went and drafted it so that we made sure that things were done.
Great. Are there any members of the public wishing to speak on this item? Okay. Any other, any further comments? Okay. So this is an action item. All those in favor of recommending adoption of the proposed ordinance to amend IMC Chapter 13.90 water sewer and stormwater recovery contracts, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pass this three to zero, and I believe that can be on consent.
Consent?
Consent.
Thank you.
Sexy as it is.
Okay. And the last item on our agenda this evening is project updates, and this will be presented by Sheldon Lynn, Public Works Engineering Director.
Okay. So the project updates, I'm just going to hit Southeast 62nd, and if you have other questions, I'm happy to look them up and answer them for you. Southeast 62nd, we were actually hoping to be able to open the road a little earlier, but we're not going to be able to open the road a little earlier. We've been having challenges on the east side. Right now, we are focused in crossing our fingers with the week of December 17, sometime that week. So it's still by the end of the year.
Yeah.
But you think that's a more probable circumstance than sooner. So that's what we're kind of planning around right now. The west side, Lake Drive, if you haven't had a chance, go drive it. It's beautiful. It's pretty much complete. They've done the stamped concrete around the roundabout, the aprons. The RFPs are working, the lights are working. They're just kind of tidying up. Next week, they expect to demobilize off that side of the project and move all their equipment and so forth to the east side, and then move some of the equipment just basically away. So things are moving well. Lake Drive looks really good.
A month away.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Councilmember Ray?
When do we get to install the cool new art?
As soon as we know what the grades are in that area. The challenge with the art right now is that the amount of activity that's happening on the east side, where a lot of the art goes, there's just too much conflict happening with the work that we have to do for the curb gutter, sidewalk, and landscape filling and things like that to allow them in, because it would just, we're working so close on the critical path right now, just for the timeframe I gave you. So we've pretty much said, no, you're not going to come in and put your foundations in, because, one, the elevations aren't correct yet, and they'd have to come in and survey the elevations, and you start to, it'll slow us down. And I don't want to slow us down right now. Hopefully, towards the end of December, they can come in and do whatever they want.
Thank you, Sheldon.
Any questions? Okay, I had one. I noticed that the stormwater engineer, senior stormwater engineer is, has accepted their position or will be starting tomorrow?
Correct.
Okay. So I wanted to point that out as something that's an exciting development. And then, also, just to ask about the stormwater master plan. So that will begin shortly. What's the timeline for that work?
The expectation on that is that with the new stormwater engineer coming on board, they'll begin the process of solicitation for consultants and the like, probably, I'm saying, first quarter next year. No pun intended. They got to get their feet wet here first. And, you know, get their, get their arms around the system a little bit better so they can understand and be able to work and get a consultant on board, negotiate scope in a more expeditious way. So, yeah. Hopefully, first quarter next year, we'll be on it.
And I have one comment, which is, at the last meeting, there was a suggestion to do a sentence or two or some sort of summary on some of these items. And I just wanted to keep that on our radar, because, again, when I was looking at the Issaquah Highlands ponds telemetry, I was thinking, what is that one? And I know we talked about that one last time. So that, I think, is something that's not revised yet. The chart hasn't been revised.
Oh, it hasn't? Okay. Because I pushed it a couple of times, saying, hey, you got another column to fill out. So, yeah. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Well, thank you for that. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak on this? Okay. So is there anything else for this meeting? So the next meeting of the Council Infrastructure Committee will be December 20th, 6:30 in council chambers. And with that, this meeting is adjourned at 7:56. Thank you.